Good evening. Welcome to the December 7th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Kate Potter and I call this meeting to order at 5:05 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before proceeding, I would like to call us into executive session. I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session in order to approve and consider the release of minutes from the meeting held in executive session on September 14th, 2021, to discuss complaint from David Sobel dated September 1st, 2021, against the Regional School Committee and its members relative to information received in the school district's response to a public records request, and to discuss a complaint from Ricky Relis dated September 8th, 2021, concerning the procedure being followed by the Regional School Committee to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of a member from Sherburne pursuant to the school committee policy BBBE, and to approve and consider the release of minutes from the meeting held in executive session on September 28th, 2021, to discuss an open meeting law complaint filed by David Sobel dated September 20th, 2021. We will return to open session at 5:30 PM. And now I need to do a roll call vote. Maggie Sharon?
I first, if you made that motion, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
That's okay. And then Maggie Sharon, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. I'd like to welcome and welcome back members to the Regional School Committee meeting for December 7th. We will begin with community comments. Then before that, I will read my public comment preamble. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For our community comments, please virtually raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and whether you live in Dover, Sherburne, Boston, or are DS faculty member. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to do other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. Now, we do have a joint school committee meeting following at 7 o'clock, but I recognize that there are many parents here who wish to make a comment, and we certainly want to hear from you. So hopefully, we get to hear from everybody, but at some point, we might have to check in and move it along. And if the other regional members could help me with looking for raised hands, I would appreciate that.
And Kate, is it worth mentioning, I'll be timing and giving people a 30-second notice.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to help you with timing. Thank you. George Morrell? George?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a parent from Sherburne, eighth grade parent, and I'd like to discuss the, your last meeting, you canceled the eighth grade field trip, and I think a lot of, we've sent a letter to the school committee regarding this, requesting that agenda item be added tonight, which it wasn't. And I also want to say, there are a lot more parents prepared to come tonight. We were confused because, especially in the town of Sherburne, on the town calendar, it only lists a meeting for 7 o'clock. So at 4 o'clock this afternoon, many of us were surprised to find that the meeting was at 5:30 and not at 7 tonight. So I think there's a lot of parents who weren't here who were planning on being here. But that kind of leads into my point of the lack of communication. The, when this decision was made at your last meeting, there was no discussion of the survey that was sent to parents at the beginning of the year. There was very, we never knew that this was going to be coming up. The agenda, the discussion was done under superintendent reports, and then there was an approval under field trips, which, I mean, that could have been anything. And there was no communication with the parents. And I feel like a decision this big for our eighth graders, after the middle school experience that they've had, should have had, at least had some input from the parents. And I'm very disappointed in that. And then with the confusion today, and again, a lack of an agenda item, I really, really don't think you're hearing what the parents have to say on this. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other hands? I'm not seeing anyone. Is anyone else seeing a hand up? Oh.
Eric and Molly Cullen?
Addie Mayway.
Okay, thank you. Eric and Molly?
Yeah, sorry. I'm a little technically not advanced at Zoom, so I'm struggling here. I was just wondering if, how, I know we are bringing it up tonight, we're voicing our concerns, but is there a way to reopen this discussion, or how can we go about so we could be more involved? And there's been some discussion on our end, and I think some valid points have been made by parents in terms of, you know, steps that we could take to possibly have this event, or this, I guess it's like a bigger field trip, and still make it safe. So I'm wondering if there's a way we could, how we reopen this discussion and this decision so we could, you know, bring those to light and have a more open discussion between parents and, and the committee and the superintendent?
Thank you, Molly. I know that the superintendent is planning on speaking to this a little bit later.
Yeah, so I guess, kind of, the letter that was sent basically pointed out that there were some, it looked like that, anyone watching them, we obviously didn't all attend the meeting on November 9th, but anyone watching would see that there appeared that the committee didn't have complete information and made a decision. And again, parents were not involved. I don't know exactly where teachers stand on this. It didn't, there wasn't a lot of discussion, so that's, I think, where this stems from, a frustration, feeling like a pretty big decision after a couple of years where even still our kids are, and I know, I know the staff is too. I mean, I'm, we're in the middle of, luckily, putting on a musical, but everybody is just stretched tight with all the what-ifs, what, and trying to be safe and COVID. And I get that, but June is still a far ways away, and it seems like at some point, we need to be looking to the future. So an opportunity to have a real discussion is welcome.
Thank you, Addie. Graham?
Yeah, so Graham Lu, eighth grade parent. You know, I think, without repeating the points that have already been made, I think it would be helpful to hear with kind of more specificity what the concerns are, what steps could be taken to mitigate them, and hear a discussion of the balancing of like, why do we do this trip, right? We must think it has value, because it's not just part of our tradition, there's got to be a reason why we do it. And I think all the parents on here feel like it has a tremendous amount of value. And how do we weigh that against the things that we could do to try and mitigate the risks? And I think just a more open discussion of that would be really valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. I'm not seeing any other hands, is anyone else? I'll give it a minute. Meg? Meg Siegel?
Yep, hi, sorry, I was on mute. I would just like to say that if there is, I know the school committee and the staff has a lot on your plate, you know, without this DC trip. So if there is a need for like a subcommittee to help research mitigation strategies, or to just do a little investigation of what other organizations are doing who are going on these trips, I just wanted to raise my hand and say that I could help with that if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Molly, do you have your hand up again?
Sorry, this is the less important half of the Molly split. I second what Meg said, happy to help in any way.
Thank you, Eric. Melissa McRabick? Thank you.
Hey there, guys. I'm sorry for the background noise. I'm making fajitas if anybody wants delivery, I do that. I just wanted to say, first off, thank you to everyone on the committee, love all of you, know you work very hard and have gotten us through this, through the bulk of the pandemic. One of the challenges or issues I heard in the recording from the last meeting was a concern about kind of bifurcating the student body with people who could and could not attend, that there would be some people who would not, some parents who would not be able to go down and pick up their child if they turned out COVID positive or got sick. I think what's now happening is some parents are looking into options to have the trip without the school. And so ultimately, that is happening regardless, where there will be some students going to DC with or without the school, because the parents feel so strongly about this being an important event in their kids' lives. I've been through it once with my oldest, my second did not get to go, talks about it often, really misses it, my third really can't wait to go, and my fourth, God willing, in two years will be able to send him. So just wanted to raise that, that the problem, one of the problems that you're hoping to circumvent, actually may be getting worse. But thank you to everyone, and also happy to join the committee if help is needed.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm not seeing any more hands, is anyone else? Okay, and thank you, everyone. We always appreciate hearing your thoughts. This will conclude our community comment portion of our school committee meeting, and I will open it up to the reports.
Great, so I think the only report on this evening is the warrant report. So you have your monthly warrant report listing the warrants that have been processed since your last meeting. I'd like to thank Judy for coming in and getting us caught up. So again, if you ever have any questions or want to see the detail, everything's here in central office for the committee's review.
Thank you, Don. And does that move us then to the proposed changes for the high school program of studies?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite Principal John Smith and his team to review the proposed changes to the program of studies.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Potter, you can hear me, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. I've just, I've been having a couple of computer issues. Certainly, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but I just wanted to point out that each year, we take a look at our program of studies to ensure that it aligns with all district policies, to ensure that it aligns with our student handbook, and we make any necessary changes that need to be put into place. This particular program of studies, we also have a new guidance executive assistant, and her name is Colette Cronin, and she really did a fabulous job on this, laying out the wording. Really, there aren't too many major changes, a couple that I do want to bring to your attention. One is, we are proposing a new course in forensic science. It would be a junior, senior elective sophomore base that would join our other electives such as marine biology, astronomy, anatomy, and advanced topics. And this is a course that will be taught by one of our current science department members, who taught it at a school that she had been at previously. And it's also a very popular course in my jobalike groups, in talking to other principals, and then obviously other science teachers. And one of the things that we often will do is we'll have conversations with different student groups, and I brought this to the attention of my school council, of which many students sit on, and they were really excited by this potential opportunity, whether it's something they want to pursue as a major, which some kids do, or they're just really interested and intellectually curious about forensic science. So that's one of the major changes, proposals, I should say. We added things such as a portrait of a graduate. We added some school-wide expectations and a couple of other things. One of the things that has changed that I want to bring to your attention, especially if you've had students come through Dover Sherburne High School in the past, the SAT subject tests are no longer being offered. That is why you probably see us removing the wording for that. The College Board, like other companies, does like to generate revenue, and they were finding that colleges and universities were not supporting or giving credit, or even using these subject tests as part of their platform for admission. And so with, between that, and then a decreasing enrollment and the pandemic, I think that they decided to move forward and to focus on shifting the SAT around a bit, focusing in on ACT options, so there is no longer any subject exams as part of the SAT process. Those were really kind of the major ones, and I'm happy to answer anything that's more specific, if any members of the Regional School Committee would like to have more information.
Yeah, hi, John. Thank you. I also echo that the new EA who did the changes, that was really, they look great. And this may not be appropriate for the program of study change, it may be appropriate for something sort of broader. I noticed that you changed headmaster to principal. And in many colleges, they're changing the word freshman to something else. I don't know if we've talked about that, or thought about it, or have a plan about that. I think at UVM, they use first years or something.
That is correct.
I just wanted to raise that as something, and wonder if maybe that's something you might want to think about for the future, just saying, you know?
Yeah, I would agree with you, and we have in fact had conversations, Ms. Keegan and I, and members of the guidance department about this. You know, we were thinking about going from freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, to first year, second year, third year, fourth year, or grade nine, 10, 11, and 12, just to simplify it. So we are in the process of having that conversation. That conversation, which would take place in our academic standards, is coming up in a meeting next month, so it may be a potential addendum item. But I do agree with you, Ms. Miller, I think that that would be an appropriate change to make.
Wonderful, thank you, John. Take care.
Thank you.
First of all, yes, thank you so much. The clarity of these changes is really helpful, so please pass that on. And one comment slash question is, it appears that the senior project is being amped up in rigor and sort of intensity. Is that just to reflect current practice, or is there an actual, like, sort of increase of that program?
Sorry about that, I think I may have frozen up. It's actually reverting back to pre-COVID standards, what we want the project to be. We reduced it for obvious reasons during COVID, not that we're not still in COVID, but we're now in a different place where we're able to have more outside placements. So it simply is returning to our previous protocols around the length and the time of senior project.
Awesome. And do you, and I should have looked it up on page 127, and I didn't, but can you clarify, what is the high school's school-to-career success path?
Yeah, so it's a new piece that we have that we're pretty excited about. You know, in past years, some schools had it called work-study, and ours is more of a program that would enable some of our students who the traditional high school trajectory has been challenging, let's say, in some ways, and we wanted to look at an opportunity where we kind of do it now, the case-by-case situation, but we did want to put it out there so that families and upperclassmen knew that they had other ways in which they could still obtain their high school diploma, and it's not GED, so it is the high school diploma, in which they could gain some credits through actual work experiences. Tying in similarities to our senior project, where you have a mentor in school, you have a placement mentor, we would have the same thing in place. And we brought this to academic standards, and I have to give Ann Keegan credit, because she really did a lot of the drafting of this information, and obtained similar plans that are being done in Medfield, Wellesley, Natick. And it really just provides, I think, even greater inclusivity for all students to obtain that goal of achieving their diploma, and then having opportunities after that to continue their education in ways in which are more appropriate for them. So it wouldn't necessarily be something that kids could just do on the side, it would have to be something that was approved through guidance, approved through the family and my office, and it would really be for students who the traditional high school experience has been challenging.
Well, I really appreciate seeing that, and I think between that, between some of the changes the English department has made to really update and create dynamic reading and different literature programs, and also, you know, what you described with the forensic science, we're doing a lot of work, I can see your, we, you are doing a lot of work around making sure that the education kids are getting is, you know, sort of diversified, meets different needs, and also continues to be rigorous. So thank you so much for all the work that went into these changes and proposals.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Educating all of our students means just that, means educating all of our students and making sure that we've got various pathways to ensure that students can have success.
I have a question. John, so I agree, this is all really exciting. I was just curious, there are a couple of courses that look like they used to be open to grade 11 and 12, and now will only be open to grade 12. Will, does that mean it will be more challenging for students to be able to get into those classes if they want to?
Yeah, it's a good question, Kate. No, it really won't change it. Typically, these are courses that have traditionally only been enrolled with seniors, with a couple of exceptions. And as you probably recall, we have had a really big push in encouraging students to enroll in Facing History in Ourselves as juniors and seniors. So, you know, we've really looked at that as an opportunity, and the senior electives, so very few cases in the 10 years I've been in the district where we've actually been able to have a junior take that, because the junior year, the requirement is United States history, that is state law. So, and that's the year that we have chosen to have US history offered. So it really would not, and if we ran into a situation, you know, that senior year for them to take a variety of electives, that's where we always allow for creativity, and giving kids other types of options, and where I look at, okay, I may allow you to take the psychology course and count it as an elective credit, and that'll cover you there, so you won't have to worry about taking another elective.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Can I ask why we made that change? What was the rationale behind it?
Yeah, the social studies department simply just felt as though what we frequently will do is for the few kids who do sign up junior year, we don't typically have openings. There just isn't enough enrollment opportunities for that, and that's why they end up being able to take it their senior year.
Makes sense. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Um, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the 2022-2023 Dover Sherburne Regional High School Program of Studies. Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Judy, another second?
Any further discussion? All right, Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Mannion, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you very much. All right, that moves us to Finance and Operations.
And so you have your financial statements, actually, through November 30th, sorry about that, for both revenue and status appropriations, and as we continue to do, the report is a running report with new information in bold, so there's not a whole lot of new bold. And I hope that, because you got that report this morning, you still have time to take a look at it. We still do have the vacancies that I was hoping to have filled before we met this meeting open, so I did change that date to November 30th. We are actively recruiting and actually have, are having interviews now, so I remain hopeful that we'll fill both our open custodial positions, and then the most important to me, the accounts payable position. The new piece that's affecting salaries, and we're going to talk about this a little bit more at the joint meeting, is that we have added on some additional nursing support, obviously with everything that we have going on. That is now reflected in all three districts' financial statements, and for the region, specifically, it's an added cost of about $27,000. And you'll see that reflected, we went ahead and put it right into the medical and health services line item, so that's why you see the increase in that variance. On expenditures, nothing really has changed there. We will still include utility projections next month, but are not seeing anything out of the ordinary. We, since the last time we met, moving on to the ESSAR grants, we did last Friday actually get approval for all three of our ESSAR three grants in all three districts, so it took a little while. There's just a lot of grants out there right now, because on top of our regular grants, there's all these special sort of COVID-related. So DUSI is actually overwhelmed with the amount of grant reviews they're doing. So the good news is that the approval goes back to the date that we submitted. In addition to that, it actually goes back to March of 2020, when all of this started. So for those districts that still had costs to be covered, these grants were allowed to go back that far. Luckily, that's not the situation that we're in, most of the money will be spent going forward. One requirement of that, and we will be taking care of that this week, actually, our implementation plan and budget piece that's in the ESSAR three grant is required to be posted on our website, so we Uh, so we will be adding that probably to the front page of the website for all three districts, so that that is public information for everyone to be able to review. Um, I, that's just one of the requirements that is part of this, this um, this particular grant. So you will see that forthcoming um, on our website. Um, and then we have then made the decision that your audit of financial statements will be in February, um, not January. Uh, just in, to allow us time to uh, finish the, the, the back um, room part of the audit as far as all the footnotes, financial statements, and what we need to do. Um, and so those will be forthcoming in January or in February, and our treasurer will be joining us for that meeting. Any specific questions on the monthly statement? Great. Thank you.
Maggie has a question?
Oh, Maggie, sorry.
Sorry, I couldn't find the hand raising button. Um, do we have, I mean, just looking at the um, the spare spending that is sort of, you know, in the, in the red at this point, do we feel like with grant money and things that are targeted in those ESR grants that we're going to be able to recover some of the costs of additional educational assistance or the, in the medical thing? Or are we, you, you know, how are we sort of working out?
So I, I think what makes sense is to continue and letting this continue to stay in the general fund to see how it all shakes out, because it'd be to our benefit to be able to continue to hold on to some of the ESR grants if we can absorb some of these other costs in our general operating um, funds. So for now, versus pulling it out, I'm going to let it ride until we see that we're going to have a financial problem with covering it. Um, and so that's sort of what I've been doing in all three districts, rather than be too aggressive and moving everything over to the grant and have money left over. You know, at the end of the year on our general funds, uh, I think we're going to try to cut the general um, fund as tightly as we can to uh, keep those expenses in our general, in the operating fund. So um, because remember, the ESR three grants good until, is for three years, so we hate to, we don't know what's going to be coming down um, the road and what additional needs we may need that we might not be able to cover. So uh, we're, we're going to be prudent with that right now. Um, any situation where we um, don't have the money to cover, we've got the grants there as backup.
So the grants are a possible funding source if this does not work?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, yeah. No, it is. Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dawn? Okay. Thanks, Dawn. Um, moving on to number seven, the A C E D recommendations for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, and Madam Chair also, um, I obviously uh, under community comments, I know there were a lot of questions. Respectfully, I I know we don't respond uh, during meetings. Uh, but what I would like to do is after we go through the fiscal year twenty-two, three operating and capital budget before your consent agenda, I would like to share some uh, some information with the community.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so the A C E D recommendations for F Y twenty-three, I'm just going to review a couple. Um, I did have a number of administrators on this evening uh, that are very familiar with these um, recommendations, and if they would like to jump in, I know Principal John Smith, Dawn Fattori. Um, we had a number of our members that are part of this committee. So first was a change uh, in the name for uh, C A P A Y to A S U for our Asian Student Union. That's at no cost. Uh, that was approved, uh, changing that name. We also added a knitting club at a one-point-oh ratio, and this was due to uh, really increased participation. It was heartwarming to hear the number of kids uh, taking up knitting um, across all of our student body, and that is going to be at a one-point-oh ratio of one thousand five hundred eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, that was also approved by the committee. And a move for ten volunteer coaches, which is something that the district um, has supported in the past to uh, ten assistant coaching positions. And you see the figure there of over thirty thousand dollars, and you see the asterisk um, talking about uh, in conjunction with this addition. I do want to let the committee know that we're going to be bringing forward proposals under the student athletic fees. Uh, and these approvals will be taking place in the January meeting. So although it was approved by the committee, and it's what it was supposed to be, it's October meeting, we didn't get to this till uh, sometime in November. Um, for the region, these were the changes. And any questions or any comments from, again, uh, school leadership that took part in these recommendations?
Can I just add on the coaching? So we've been talking about this, I think earlier in the fall and maybe last uh, spring, and that um, what we're trying to do is reduce the amount of fundraising that parents have to do for these teams. It also brings um, equity to the positions. Um, if you, this is a perfect example of this coming forward tonight, because if you look in your consent agenda, you're going to see the donations that you're rec, that you're approving for various coaching positions, and the amounts are all over, all over the place. So I think part of the goal here is to streamline the positions. It doesn't mean that you can't take one of those stipend assistant coaches and split it three ways. But what it does at least means there's equity in uh, the different teams and and the, the amount they're paying for the um, for the assistant coaching positions that are added positions. We're now putting those in the appendix D, we'll be covering the cost of that. We um, because we're, you know, we're sort of uh, you know, can't keep up with ourselves right now. Uh, we do have the flexibility um, to be able to have, have this approved in January, because your next version of your budget, which we'll talk about later, will come at your February meeting. So that'll give us time still to incorporate that into your next version, but also allow uh, time to sort of, for us to look and see what the increase needs to potentially be in the athletic fee. I'm looking right now at a range of uh, twenty-five to thirty-five dollars. What I'm, what we want to be able to spend a little more time is to see what's in the existing budget that we can maybe tighten up to a take over, you know, to cover some of this, or how much do we have to actually cover? So thirty-five dollar increase would cover a dollar for dollar almost, the twenty-five dollars would be a little short. So that's where we're just looking to see what, what is the amount that would come forward that would sort of make us whole um, in your um, operating budget for athletics.
Thanks, Dawn. Maggie?
So philosophically, I totally support this. You know, I feel like as a, you know, parent who's been at this a long time with kids playing lots of sports, you know, you dutifully pay your, I think it's three hundred dollars now, your fee. And then your kid starts practice and you get this really friendly email from these nice coaches, um, captains' parents, and it asks you for like a hundred and twenty-five dollars as a donation, and that, you know, that feels yucky. And um, so how do we ensure that in doing this, which I think is the right decision, that we don't have mission creep where the team and the coaches is happy to have their new coaches, but it would be great if we could have this other coach and the parents could all chip in to pay for it? Because I feel like if I support increasing athletic fees to pay for this, which philosophically I do, how do I ensure to parents who, like, lots of times reach out and are like, what the actual heck? And sometimes like, and people are just trying to do their job as captains' parents, but like, sometimes there's some like extreme, not extreme, some friendly pressure that happens that everyone needs to pay this fee. Or, you know, sell a thousand candy bars or like whatever we're doing. How do we make that be reasonable? Because I do think like a little bit of fundraising is, is nice. Like, you know, we want to buy a new net or, you know, whatever the sport things are. But I, I'm really worried about mission creep, because you can always have more coaches.
So John, do you want to start first? Yeah, because we, we've actually talked a lot about this, Maggie, and I think there's going to be some uh, steps or plans in place to prevent that, but.
I'm guessing you have, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and this is a conversation that uh, Dawn, Emily and myself have had, you know, because honestly, that's one of our concerns too, that if we do this, the expectation needs to be very clear that the majority of the fundraising that had been done was to cover the other assistant coach. Well, if that is now within the budget, you know, and we have talked to some of our coaches who sit on the Athletic Advisory Committee and have been reassured by them that there really is nothing else that they would need. Um, you know, if there's a piece of equipment or something we need, um, sometimes we pay for it out of the operating budget, sometimes the boosters have agreed that they're going to pay for it. You know, let's say it is a, a new net or a piece of software. What we don't want to have happen is exactly what you said, and that's an additional check having to be written by parents on top of the user fee, because they want it to cover all these various things. Um, so we're, we're really looking to eliminate that. I think that we're going to have to develop some language. And I think that we're going to have to put it in place and then really educate our coaches and have conversations with our captains' parents to say the reason why we put this into the budget was to create a more equitable field, and there needs to be a limit by which we continue to fundraise. Now, what I would love to see, and some of the fundraisers are are still fine. I mean, you know, the, the car washers don't make a ton of money, but the kids actually report that if the weather's decent, they're a lot of fun. So it's just a good social activity. Some of the fun, some of the things that I would like to see our student athletes engage in are more community-based opportunities, you know, giving back to the community. One of the things that I love are the clinics with the younger kids. I think anytime we can bring our youth together, um, the younger kids look up to the older kids. It's just a great opportunity. I think the, the parents of the younger children love it too, because they, they can, you know, sort of inspire their kids to say, hey, you know, if you want to be part of cross-country down the road, this is something that you can do, and it can be really beneficial. So we want to sort of change the narrative that the fundraising should be really minimal and should really just be some fun social activities that maybe it helps kids offset, you know, buying a hoodie sweatshirt that says D S Field Hockey. Instead of having to cover costs for coaches or elaborate banquets. And, you know, we do have language in our um, Athletic Advisory and our Athletic Handbook around banquets. Banquets really should be streamlined and really should not be extravagant just because it, it does create inequities, and we're really trying to put a couple of different things into place so that parents can feel, okay, I have contributed my, my activity fee. My kid now can have the full opportunities and I'm not going to be burdened with additional requests for funding.
Thank you. I think the other piece, you know, realizes that um, the control, so any volunteer coach still has to go through approval process of John and the Athletic Director, because they have to be queried and checked. So there, there's a great place to um, probably not allow that, because they still have to almost be appointed. Uh, so that should be able to stop um, adding additional coaches. So I don't know, you don't really see that, because you see the checks coming, but there is a um, almost like an application and approval process for additional coaches.
Judy?
Yeah, just Dawn, how does um, the increased athletic fee, how will that compare with, you know, neighboring communities? Is that in line with what other people are, um, you know?
Yeah, we actually talked about this at the, at the advisor, at the advisory council meeting, we had some other teachers who have other children in other districts. So we would still be like, not at the highest, be in the middle, but we would take a look at that. The last time the athletic fee was um, increased, it was two hundred and fifty, and it went to three hundred. I think that was almost five years ago. Um, and so there has to be, you know, just some adjustment here and there, and I think we try not to do it every year, but do like a uh, you know, every five or six years, a little bit of a substantial amount, and then we don't have to, to deal with it um, on the athletic side. So um, we will definitely bring forward that, those comparisons from the TVL though, just so that the committee can see where we, where we stand with the other um, competing districts.
Great. Any other questions for Dawn or Mr. Smith?
Miss Potter, if I may, I just wanted to let folks know, you know, if they're interested. So Capay was part of an uh, um, organization, was Coalition for Asian Pacific um, youth. And the change proposal actually came from the students who are in this organization and their advisor. Um, and the advisor approached me and said, we'd like to, they would like to change the name, and we sat down, we had a conversation about it. They wanted to bring it into really kind of a more modern um, perspective of what they hope to do. Capay was a national organization that brought um, community um, understanding, community tolerance, community um, education, and the Asian Student Union still wants to do that, but they also want to have a real focus on improvement in their score, uh, in their schools and improvement within their um, their organization um, to provide uh, guest speakers and other opportunities. So the Asian Student Union is something that you would see probably more frequently in many schools and also colleges and university campuses. So this, I just wanted to let you know where the change came from. It came from the students themselves. They requested it.
Thank you.
And the knitting club has been in existence for nine years. Um, they are a fantastic group. I've attended a couple of their meetings. Um, and they each year do a drive where they make um, items for um, less privileged and and folks who need support and help. Sometimes it's clothing banks, sometimes it might be certain um, religious organizations, and the work that they do, they donate it. And the advisor, um, who is Mr. McGovern, um, will set up a time where a number of students will go and they will uh, donate those items. Um, so for our students, it's not only the ability to learn that skill, they're also socializing together. We have both um, females and males, I should let you know, which is awesome. And um, they also then get to see their product being uh, brought to an organization that will uh, be used for, for something great, for people to have uh, warm gloves and warm mittens.
That's wonderful. I didn't realize how long that had been around.
Yeah, it's been around nine years, and it's really, you know, from what I've heard, at the beginning, I remember there was a few members, and then it got a little bigger, then a little smaller, but the last four or five years, it has really been big. And um,
You're back on mute, John.
Sorry about that. We encouraged the advisor to put forward a proposal, because we felt as though um, the group really um, had some strength in time. Um, and the service that they were providing, we just felt was so important for our school.
Yeah, that's great. I wonder if they'll ever let uh, school committee members drop in.
You can. In fact, I will give you the times. They meet after school. Absolutely.
I could use some lessons. That was one of my COVID, um, my daughter and I tried to learn how to knit, and it didn't go very well.
I'll just tell you one real quick story, because I know everybody's busy. We actually, one of the young ladies who, who decided to join, one of her friends was on, and she said she was so excited, because over the holidays, she wanted to practice through the fall and be able to then spend time with her grandmother over the holidays. And then just say, hey, you know, would you like to knit? And her grandmother would look at her and say, oh, sure, what do you mean? And she was then going to show her how she could knit. So I think it was uh, for her, a way to sort of, you know, share a family um, tradition and opportunity. And, and to me, that's, that's heartwarming and, and you know, what human decency is all about.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, if there aren't any more questions, I can turn it over to Superintendent Smith.
Or we do the budget first?
Oh, sorry.
Right, that's okay. Um, so uh, hopefully the school committee members at least found your, your little package um, in your doorway or your front door on Friday. Uh, so we are starting the fiscal year twenty-three budget process. Um, just to sort of set the stage a little bit, this is just the first draft to keep the process going. As you know, both towns have a December date where they like the initial numbers, just so they can start putting together um, their townwide budget. So that's one of the reasons why we come out on, on the earlier side with budgets. And you guys are the third budget, the two uh, locals have already had their budgets, budgets presented in November. So we'll be able to meet those deadlines of the town and have all the school budgets in hand. Um, you have additional meetings in January and February, leading up to your final approval in March. So I think I say that just as, to make it um, to take away a little bit of the stress and let you know that we've got multiple times and multiple months over which to continue to talk about the fiscal year twenty-three budget. So tonight's really just to introduce it, start the discussion, and, and give you um, you know, the information to study over the next, you know, couple of months and, and until we get to a good um, good endpoint. Um, just to walk through a little bit, I think you have one or two new members, not that many. Just to walk through a little bit, I think you have one or two new members, not that many. The book itself, you have in the first section, sort of just an opening overview memo along with the guidance from both the town's finance department. So warrant and advisory, so warrant from Dover, advisory from Sherburne. They're pretty similar to prior years. You're used to me saying that, you know, Dover does level service, which makes, which means that they want us to the not dependent on the cost, they want us to make sure we're providing the same level of service. And then will, they will absorb that added cost of that. Sherburne takes a little bit different perspective with level funded. One change that has been very helpful to us this year is that if you remember over the last couple of years, they've always given us a flat percentage for increase in salaries, which doesn't take into consideration some of our employment contracts that we have with the various groups. This year they're saying that, you know, they will allow increases for your contractual obligations. You're still level funded for all other pieces of the operating budget, which is a little bit still difficult for us with transportation and healthcare and things that we, you know, it's hard to be level funded because we don't have control over those costs. But there is some nice relief that we don't have to worry about also making up some of the salary increases. So I just want to make that, and you can read in detail both towns, because I think it's important for you to understand the financial picture that they're, that they have in their towns and realize how big of a piece of the budget we are, but we, you know, and have respect for the situation that they're facing. Your second section is actually the details. So on a monthly basis, you see the function codes rolled up into one nice statement. This is your opportunity to see what makes up all those line items because you see all the accounts that we manage. You are seeing that in your budget book. And so there gives you a little bit more insight as to the true operations of the school district. In those categories or those line items where there are significant changes, I tried to provide a little narrative for you off to the side, just to put it in perspective. Also behind that section is a sort of a summary of staffing. That's a good, good summary to go look at because there you can see the new positions that we have already incorporated in to the budget. It sort of highlights them more in a summary basis than the individual line items. The next section is the assessment calculation, just to, you know, have something fun to look at. And again, I'm always happy to answer any questions on that. It's, it's a lot of numbers on a piece of paper, but that's, you know, it's the formal calculation based on your regional agreements. The fourth section is enrollment. Right now, what you have in your book is the current enrollment for both October and November. We will be doing the projections and bringing those forward to you. We're hoping in January and it's just using our projection model that if you remember Superintendent McCallum sort of brought to us and that we have been using and works really well for us at the elementary. It doesn't have a huge, as huge of an impact at the region because of how you're, you don't have individual classes for students. So it's, but it's still good to see where we think we're going to be looking or going in over the next five years. We will also be bringing forward to for you in sort of that section is the class size list that the high school usually puts together for us and something similar to the middle school. And that will help you understand some of the additional high school regular ed teacher staffing that we, that we have already incorporated into the budget. And your final section of your cap, of your budget book is the five-year capital plan, which we will also talk about tonight and approve. So we can move that forward to both towns' capital committees. So just, you know, that's sort of the, the sort of the opening. Really the assumptions, and I'm looking forward to the day where assumption A about actually mentioning that we're going to be in regular school operations goes away. But it still seemed pertinent enough to leave it on for this budget. Again, we obviously build the budget in compliance with the town's budget guidance. Continue to align our budgets with our strategic plan. And it's interesting since the, the time that we presented the, the two locals budget, I have changed sort of D, it used to say, you know, continued assessment of students' needs post-COVID. I think that I've changed it when I was reflecting on this for this time to just say, continued assessment of student needs during the multiple COVID-related transitions. Because I, I think it's premature at this point, unfortunately, to say post-COVID. We continue to have pivoting and changing and pivoting and changing. And so with that, when you guys brought up some of those pivots that we do, we're going to be able to do and act on because we're going to have some ESTER grants hopefully to, to backfill that. So that's where I just want to be really careful about how much we potentially spend this year. If we can absorb it into the general fund, because we really don't know what's coming down the pike. And it's great to have that flexibility, you know, in future years. Again, payroll is your, really your driving budget driver. Eighty percent of your budget is payroll and related employee benefits. Just summarize for you, the contractual agreement increases for the current contract is two to 2.25%. And of course, the step and lane increases for our educators. We are in the third year of the contracts. I just be honest, don't know where those three years went. But so that it's nice, this is like the good budget year in that we know where everything's going to be for contractual reasons. And know that your next fiscal year 24 budget will be, you'll be under negotiations for a new contract. The healthcare premium, so I use seven and a half percent right now. We actually have the rate setting meeting for West Suburban on Monday, which is about two months earlier than we normally have it. So that's going to be great for the budget building process. So I do feel like seven and a half percent is going to be on the high end. But what we don't know yet is the cost of the supplement of the new plan that's going to take place of the Fallon. So that we haven't really been pretty to what that information, with that pricing looks like. If it's in line with Fallon or a little higher than Fallon, it will be the lowest cost plan. So I know it won't be any higher than the other plans. But that is a little piece of information that we don't know. And so we will be able to tell you more information about that in January. And again, remember we are doing the rate setting early just because of the impact that this has on numerous towns in West Suburban because they're so heavily dependent on Fallon. And then again, the payroll, the drivers in payroll are added staffing positions, which we do have a few. And then as always, we will do the impact of retirements. And we do know, we're aware of several retirements that potentially will take place. We like to wait until after that February 1st date passes. So that's why it'll be in your February version 2.0. But we should see some savings relief from retirements that we'll be able to, to take into consideration. We're continuing our trend budgeting for all other operating accounts. But I sort of segue that into saying that we have to keep in mind the operational circumstances of the last two years. So normally trend budgeting, you look to see where your spending came in at different years and if it's always under what you have, you cut the budget. Well, we've been in such a weird fluctuation with both fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 that you have to be cautious completely using trend budgeting without taking that into consideration. So we were a little less, we did a little bit less of that this go around because we want to be careful that we're not taking away things that are actually needed, but weren't purchased because of the circumstances we were in. And then everyone is, well, the two titles are probably on here. Definitely Sherburne looking to see how the assessment percentages turned out. And luckily they were very minimal swings. There was a little bit of an increase for Sherburne in both the operating and capital, but it's point one three for operating and point one eight for capital. So that with that, the enrollment's holding sort of steady between the two towns, which is good news. And for, for purposes of starting the budget. Because if you recall, we've had situations where, say Sherburne's increases in the assessment went up 1%. Well, right before you even start building your budget, they're already looking at a 1% of say $22 million. And so it's nice to see that where we're, we're starting, where there's not a big swing in assessments for either town. And keep in mind, I, the assessment calculation is actually in section three, the numbers themselves, and you can see how those are built. It includes both October 1st enrollment and November 1st enrollment, which is why you have both sets of data in your enrollment section for that. I am highlighting in all three districts that we have several initiatives currently under review that are not included in this budget. We have their one-time implementation changes. We have to move our financial systems to the clouds. Right now, we currently hosted on a server here, but our, our software firm is no longer going to support those participants who do their own servers. So we're sort of forced to go to the cloud. That will be an upgrade cost to us. In addition, we're transitioning the special education records from East Bed to Aspen. And again, there's a one-time initial implementation cost to transfer those records over and get us up and running on Aspen. And we're also, as you know, from talking about communications, looking at a district-wide website upgrade. So we don't, we're still researching those, trying to figure out what the costs are going to be. Those costs will be included if we decide, well, most of them, we're going to decide to move forward with in version 2.0. The high market estimate of, of $30,000 could be potentially added to the regions if we move forward with all three of those. So I didn't want to lose sight of that, but we're not ready to start putting numbers to some of those quite yet. So where did we sort of, we land? So the initial budget has an overall budget increase of about a million dollars, which is a four and a half, a 4.15% increase. To put that in perspective, you can see that the fiscal year increase in 22 was actually less than 1%. But you have to go back and look and see what some of the drivers were from that. We added no new staff in fiscal year 22. And we have the luxury of taking, if I remember correctly, it's about $150,000 in retirement savings. So you have to just be careful of making sure you understand all the ins and outs before you start comparing budget increases from fiscal year to fiscal year, because a lot goes into that. And just as another piece of information, the increase in fiscal year 20 was 2.75%. So we're typically, when fiscal year 21 was 3.4%. So coming at 4.15 as a starting point is actually pretty consistent with our pre-COVID, pre-COVID years. So I just wanted to put that in perspective for people. And then you can see Dover's assessment increase and Sherburne's assessment increase. So right now that is what they would be looking to be able to fund for us to be able to bring this budget to approval. So you have also your revenue summary, but right now, I will just be honest, that's all just placeholders. Because we don't know anything about chapter 70 or chapter 71. And the Dover and Sherburne assessments are just a byproduct of what your budget's going to be. So it's there so that you can see how we fund everything, but there's still going to be a lot of change to the revenue side, once we get those initial cherry sheets out, which come out usually the third week of January. So again, another reason why we're going to do version 2.0 at your February meeting. And just your timeline is in your summary memo. So we will have a meeting on January the 11th where we'll bring forward to you any new information, no budget adjustments, but new information. Obviously, we'll be asking you to approve the appendixy recommendations that we just discussed and potentially the athletic fee increase. We will then, we're planning on having a student services presentation at the January joint meeting. You'll see that we're adding some positions for some of the special programs. All the schools are sort of having some special ed additions. And so we thought it would be great to do a presentation and a little bit of a recap of special education programming from K to 12 to really see the, the impact that we've had on building programs in districts and to sort of reinforcing the need for some of the, the adjustments or the additions that we're requesting. And to sort of see where we stand on a district-wide basis. Because that does come into play with our added districts placements too, that you don't really see at the region because those cost at the, at the element, at the town, the local budgets. But I think to try to operate like we said, from a, from a district-wide schools district, it's good to hear what's happening and seeing the whole picture. So we look forward to having that presentation in January. We then will present version 2.0 of your budget on February 1st. You're, you're used to having your joint meeting with the two finance committees late February. The way the February vacation sort of falls this year, when Warren and advisory sort of set their calendars, they had it for the week before the break versus the week after. I, I verify that we're going to be able to meet that. One, because we already have your Norfolk County retirement number, which we typically don't have. But they did a two-year assessment last year. And knowing that the healthcare rates were going to be set in December, there, those are the two pieces of information that we're typically waiting on. That I usually walk in at that, that end of February meeting with you. So having all that in place, we will be ready to sort of have that meeting with a fairly good budget on February 16th. And then that still allows you two or three, about two weeks before you have your open hearing on March 8th. So it's actually sort of nice to have that little bit of a break. Because if you remember, we typically are doing this all like in a week's timeframe. And it doesn't give you a whole lot of time to react and, and create sort of that, that nice budget presentation, because there's just a lot happening. So I, I'm happy with the way this is going to turn out as far as the timing, and I hope that works with the committee too. But then you'll have your final approval and your public hearing on March 8th. So I wasn't going to go into detail with a lot of things, but happy to answer any initial questions. Like I said, your summary of staffing shows you the staffing additions that we're looking to do. I'll just highlight those real quick. Two of the regular education position or categories are in the high school, adding a point six to math and a point two to English. Just to put a little perspective around that, the point two in English was really targeted at the freshman level classes. Those class sizes have been creeping up. And as we all know, that is a critical, I think, foundation for our students in the writing program. So to be able to give some relief to those class sizes to get more attention to the individual students and the ability to grade more papers, that came forward from the English department. The math department, and I think this is really exciting, are asking for a point six. So they currently have a point four position. So that's where sometimes it's, it's makes sense to sort of fill that in with a full-time person, because it's hard to get to sort of higher points of people, of staff. And same with the point two, they actually have a point eight English teacher that would just go up to a 1.0. So we're not going and looking for a point two. The math is coming about for two reasons. One is the financial literacy program, the new class that they presented actually was oversubscribed. And if they had the ability to offer more semester courses, they probably could accommodate. I was astounded to hear they had 100 students actually request to take that course. So they were able to absorb the initial one semester, one semester in one year in the existing math staffing. But to really do justice to that, they want to increase that so they could potentially allow all students who want to take it, to take it. In addition, some of the college prep level two classes are creeping up in their numbers and are going over sort of the target map, the target class size that they're hoping for as far as the direct instruction to the students in that class. So that would also allow that to come back down to where it should be. So that's the justification for the point six math and the point two English. The academic specials at the middle school, as you know, we're piloting that this year. It's got, it's had great success, enough so that we're at this point ready to add it into the operating budget as a permanent position going forward. And we're looking to also, and this is, this will fit into the joint presentation on January 18th, but adding a 1.0 adjustment counselor for the GRIT program. And also we're looking to add a point five adjustment counselor that will cover the regions, just how the staffing will be set up. And as you all know, that's been SEL and just the socially emotional needs of students has greatly increased. And thus has put extra stress on our staff. And these are positions that have already been proven to be needed and we're requesting they be added to the budget. Okay, I've said enough. So if there's any questions anyone has. Okay, I've said enough. So if there's any questions, anyone has any, so what I will suggest is if you've got detailed questions, if you'll email them to Kate, we can prepare answers and present, um, you know, some more uh specifics on your questions at the January meeting. Um, but I, you know, just take time to go through, there's a lot of detail, and we'll continue to add documents to your budget book um over the coming months. Um, and are always happy to answer, you know, any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, John. As always, thank you for all of that unbelievable work. Does anyone have any um initial questions for Don? You can otherwise, of course, send them through me.
Excellent.
Great. So we need to vote to approve, are we voting to approve this first draft?
Well, and that's just, so yeah, so that's there's, so that's the operating budget. So I do need you to approve the operating budget as presented. And then I will segue just quickly into the capital budget.
Okay, great. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three as of, as presented tonight.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes. And if you need a second, I can do that too.
Thank you. I thought Judy seconded.
Oh, she did. Okay, I didn't hear that. Okay, sorry.
Uh, Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Did I get everybody? Yeah, you keep moving in my order. Okay, thank you.
So I'm just moving on quickly to the um your first version of the capital budget. So the, the good thing with the capital budget is it's a lot of it you've seen before, right? Because we do the five-year plan. Um, and so it's not like all of a sudden I'm telling you, okay, we're going to be doing FYI, you know, uh, uh, over a million dollars with, worth of uh roof projects. We've been anticipating this now for, I think, since I've been here. Uh, but now it's coming to fruition and it's time to start doing the, the work. So we've made a lot of progress and it's been great to have a full-time uh director of facilities um onboard. And just so you know, we are still using Paul about once a month or, or once or twice a month, because again, his expertise has been invaluable to um Sean McGee as he's making the transition from sort of pub, uh, private business into the public arena. Um, and but he's been instrumental in sort of getting us on the right track for these large roof projects. So since the last time we've, we've met, we have hired an architect firm um to create the drawings and to sort of get us moving along in the bid process. Uh, they've completed the initial drawings. What we're waiting for now is for them to update our estimated cost. Um, I did, I think, put in the uh well, well, one thing I should say is that, oh, I put in here that we are anticipating um some increased costs as we all know of what's happening in sort of the COVID pandemic uh materials world. Um, I'm, we've been, we've been told to anticipate potentially a fifteen percent increase in pricing. Um, I, I, so that's, we'll see how that all plays out, but we're waiting for those numbers. So um the numbers, and I've, so I've prefaced these that these are the numbers based on the last report we got from our initial um consultant that we've been working with after they did the infrared scan and, and confirmed that we could be a candidate for restoration. They did slightly increase the number. So we're carrying nine hundred and seventy-five thousand for the middle school roof. That includes both the building and the gymnasium. Just so it's clear, we're doing the middle school buildings. Um, and then Lenquist, um, I think remains steady at the four hundred thousand. Um, so we will continue along with that process. One of the things is we have to stay on some, somewhat of a tight timeline. Um, so we're actually running concurrent with all the approvals, because on projects this large, we actually had to go out to bid probably in late January, early February, to be able to retain the type of contractor that we need to do projects of this size. Uh, for those of you who sort of watched the Pine Hill Road project um come along, exact same thing. They were all ready to roll, had the contract in place once the town uh finally had that final meeting. So we're going to be sort of in the same situation, because you can't wait for the approvals at town meeting and then expect these projects to get done over the summer. So um just to sort of, this is, you know, a larger project that we've had in the last couple of years, but that's sort of how that's all going to play out. Um, our other big project, which we're going to dive into next, are the boilers and doing some of that detailed work that we've already done on, on the um, the roof project. So we will be um looking uh and seeing the research. So, you know, times have changed and what you can do. We currently have three boilers in the high school. They, based on energy efficiency and new systems that are um around, we're potentially thinking we could maybe do two boilers. But obviously, that would be a little bit more implementation and upfront engineering costs, but we're starting that process. We will also be coordinating with both towns uh for possible green community grant funding, because we're taking older equipment and potentially bringing in better energy savings. There could be potential for uh green community grants. Um, what we typically do in this arena, though, is still carry the full cost, because we don't know that in enough time to be able to say that we're going to get, say, fifty thousand in green community. Uh, what it would be would be a savings on the cost. After the fact, versus being able to build that in because of the timing of how green community grant funding applications go. So that boilers in the high school, and we're also doing the pump house boiler that sits out behind the athletic field. Those are both up for um this summer. Some new items that you haven't seen um in our plan that we're bringing forward tonight. One is the um security system upgrade to Lenquist uh common. So we've been talking about that. That was the one building that was not included in our initial rollout of the high school and middle school. Um, it was always on our thought process to add that later, once we got a feel of how the system works. But it also was sort of um expedited based, based on the NEASK findings, that they felt that was an important um a security issue to make sure that that building had the same security um level as the high school itself. So uh we have had an initial, so our existing um security company who helped us with the middle school and the high school have come out and it's given us a price quote. And so that's in your um plan tonight at twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm sorry, thirty thousand dollars. Um, in addition, we've been talking about, I think Frank brought up it uh in audit at one of the meetings about concerns about spacing at the um middle school. So they gave us two, two spaces to potentially look at putting the dividing wall in. And so basically, that takes a larger space and gives you two teaching um spaces versus one. If you remember, we did that at the um old technology lab uh during COVID uh last year. Um, we did go and look at both rooms, and there's one room that's actually a candidate for that to happen, and that is the, the larger space music room. It won't be two equal spaces because of how that room is set up, but it will allow to have two separate instruction spaces or another space for small groups. Um, and so we will be, um, we're, right now, we're carrying um an estimated cost, because we actually need to have the firm come out and take a look um at that space and give us a new quote. But that's the, basically, that's the cost that we had for um the room that we did last year. In addition, we're continuing to um update the classroom floors in the high school. So we are putting on another um set of funds to continue that switch out of the classroom floors, mainly in the um high school um English and uh social studies wing, where we've already started. So we just want to go ahead and complete that wing. And so the fifty thousand dollars will get us additional classrooms um for that, um, for that wing. So those, that's where we stand right now. As you know, these will continue to uh tweak a little, but I think both towns are anxious to see where we're going to stand because of the size. So I think over the last, I don't know, four years or so, I think we've only, we've been in like in the half a million range. Uh, so we're now creeping up a little bit. Right now, it's at a million seven forty-two, five hundred uh with a potential to increase because of the uh materials cost on some of these uh projects, but at least it gets us a, I think, a pretty um sound starting point. And so we'll be looking for approval of that particular number tonight, so we can continue the, the approval process with the towns. And I think we'll have some, a continued discussion. So we have it, because we have funded capital for at least the last three years. Um, some members may not even be aware of the word I M A, the um, and so we'll have to revisit that. And I will be honest is that uh with some of the new leadership over at the town of Dover, there's a question of the need for an I M A. So I've already had that sort of discussion with um the treasurer in Sherburne just to better understand um their feeling about that. We probably will have to bring a member, you know, of representatives from the school committee and the two towns together to talk about that process sooner rather than later. Uh, so we know what path um we need to take for purposes of the warrant articles in both towns. Um, arena. So just wanted to throw that out there, that, that definitely came up last year when I put the placeholders in uh for the town of Dover. It was questioned um why we use the I M A. So any questions on any of the specific projects or the process? Perfect.
Not yet. Thank you, Don. Thank you.
So uh, so Kate, if you can just um do a approval of that, the million seven.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, tell me that wording again, please.
Uh, if you can just approve, why don't you just say that the uh fiscal year twenty-three capital budget as presented?
Okay, great. Uh, I'd like to make a motion um to approve the capital budget for twenty twenty-three as presented.
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you, Lynn.
Judy Miller, second. Judy Miller, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins? She gave us a thumbs up. And Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn Collins, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
Um, okay, that moves us to our consent agenda. Um, did everyone get a chance to look at the approval of the minutes, I mean, the minutes from November ninth? And the information on the donations? Any questions or discussion on those? Okay, great. Um, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty-one, and the donations.
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Thank you, Maggie.
Lynn Collins, second.
Lynn, any further discussion? All right. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Yeah, Kate Potter, yes. Thank you, everyone. We have communications in our packets for your review um and items for our next meeting. Um, please let me know uh if you have anything you want to make sure is included in that. And superintendent, if you wanted to say anything?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So again, I, I want to thank the parents. Uh, I truly understand not only the disappointment uh of parents of students. Uh, this has been a difficult uh two years at best. So one of the things, and I've jotted down a couple of notes, but let me first address a couple of things that came up during comments. One was uh parents spoke to a, a survey that had gone out. So what I want to say to parents is, I want to say back in uh late August, uh very early September, I had a conversation with the leadership team at uh the middle school uh asking if it would be appropriate at this time uh for this field trip to reach out to parents. And clearly, it was, I believe, three questions. Would you be interested in sending your child to the Washington DC field trip in June? Um, and there was a yes, a no, and a maybe. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't have the figure in front of me. Uh, and I did address this or did say at one point, yes, you know, we did have a parent survey, but those were the only questions. And overwhelmingly, parents said yes, as I would expect. You know, I would like my child to be able to go on this trip. I believe we had uh three noes and maybe two maybes, but overwhelmingly, you know, so when they ask about the survey, that's what was on there. We were very clear about that. I also have met with the leadership um at the middle school and your trip organizers and volunteers numbers of times, all the while, still understanding that we are in the middle of a pandemic. Tonight, during the joint meeting, you'll hear us talk about, you know, an uptick, uh, some of the concerns we have, uh, even about unmasking, which I am very hopeful, and I hear the parents saying that when they talk about this very special middle school trip for their youngsters. I do feel we're going to get there. I don't feel we're there right now, and we have concerns. So let me address. The trip has not happened at the middle school, and all of you know that for the past two years, and I believe for twelve years previous to that. And in talking to your trip organizers, who are representing, you know, the volunteers, and the words that they used to me was, this has always been a labor of love. We so look forward to this trip, taking our eighth graders, and as many parents stated, sometimes it's brothers and sisters and, and, you know, can't wait to get to that uh particular point in their educational journey to be able to take this trip. What they are saying is we do not have the volunteers right now uh, uh, on a school level, our staff, that are willing to take the risks. It just outweighs the benefit at this point in time. Because we do not, and yes, there were a number of other things that were brought up. I brought up, if it looked like the numbers in the past, I believe you had anywhere from a hundred and fifty, even close to a hundred and seventy youngsters that took this trip to your credit. There were other things planned for those youngsters, probably a very small number of youngsters, maybe twenty youngsters, who were left behind uh in the district at their choice um to take optional or other field trips that would be going on while this trip was going on uh in Washington DC. So we, I, I did look at things like the sharing of the hotel rooms, you know, being in museums with other groups that we have absolutely no control over with mitigation. I'm sure there would be masking or things that are uh obviously mandated at our national museums. But that being said, one of the things that we looked up, when I continue to have met with the trip organizers and the so-called volunteers, we are still completely fully masked at the middle school and are not even going to reach that eighty percent attestation to even unmask while we're in school. We're committed to this trip in the future, but these are not the conditions that we feel are uh important for us during a pandemic to take this trip to Washington. I also surveyed your local towns. Although I'm new to the area, I am part of a larger superintendent group. I reached out to some, for instance, Midfield, NADIC, a number of your other surrounding towns, and they also have trips that they have had probably for same number of years, kids looking forward to it. And for this year, because of all the unknowns, they are not continuing with this trip, and they are doing other things with their eighth graders. So respectfully, we would like to move on from this. I am not recommending this field trip to Washington DC for the eighth graders at this time, based on some of the things that I shared with you. However, we are looking forward and have already put together teams of our professional staff and other staff members who are putting together three great days for all of these students. We want to be able to invite the eighth graders to be part of this planning. So again, because of the risks that um I, I just shared with you, because of the concerns that we have. And the last thing I'll leave with, and I know that we have a joint meeting to go to where I ask many of you to stay on, where we have members of our boards of health and our health advisory, you know, we, we are concerned right now with uh an uptick that we not only see in uh our region, but certainly in our state and, and much bigger than that uh in the nation. So I want to end with this. Yes. in the nation. So I want to end with this. Yes, it is true that previously you had two trips that have been approved. I want to tell you, there is one field trip at the high school for 12 students who are going to what is called the island school in the Bahamas. It is mandated that all 12 are vaccinated and must take part in testing protocols while they are living during that trip, during February vacation in the dorms of this island school. Your second trip that was approved, and that was approved, I believe in February 2020, couldn't happen last year in 2021, and we're now going to attempt it in 2022 for these 12 students. You also have a trip that was approved last June, and that was when things were a little bit different. It was a trip with, it is called going southwest to three of our national parks. I believe we have about 22 students that are going. We do have a mandatory vaccine along with looking at any of the exemptions. We're trying to work with our students to finalize that trip. But I will not tell you that's not without concerns. They do have the chaperones and I am, you know, very hopeful that those trips will happen. So respectfully, I understand the parents and what they've brought forth. And again, we are trying to do everything we can to make this memorable for every one of your students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. I'm sorry, I'm choking on my water. Thank you, everyone, for all of your input tonight. And I believe we need to pull to adjourn. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you, everyone, for your time.